We'll just put a number in there and whatever the policy ends up, we would follow that with the budgeted amount. So if you want-
That sounds like a solution at this point. We have arrived at a 7:30 so we need to start. Claire, did you want to let the audience that's standing in the hallway?
And then Dan, one quick question. Is there any other cities that do anything that's similar by chance? So we're breaking new ground with this one, pretty much?
We're a model.
Alright.
We're the model?
Yes.
Yeah, I would believe it. I would believe that.
They reach out to us.
Okay. I'll let everyone in the audience sit down first before we-
Sit down before they get up.
I know, it's always fun.
It just seems weird to not have any snow.
And non-forecasted.
There's no snow?
You should, you should, are you selling salt?
We've got ice.
You're out there selling salt off of, uh-
To who?
Colorado.
I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the play of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. The roll please. Shower.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Marquise. Kenny.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Belke.
Here.
Six present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. We have added this to our city council meeting a long time ago in order to let residents who don't have the time to stick around for the full city council meeting to ask the city council any questions that they have in their mind. So I would like to open the floor to anyone in the audience. If there's any issues that you wanted to address now, please feel free to come forward. With that being said, we'll move right to the approval of minutes of December 7th. Do I have a motion to approve? Alman Shower, seconded by Alman Belke. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll please. Shower.
Aye.
Belke.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
abstained.
The abstention goes with the ayes. That would be six and one absent. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the alman have communications to share? Alman Belke?
Yes, I received a communication from a resident on the 100 block of Holly and the issue had to do with some standing water in the rear yard and the side yards. So this resident was informed that Darien does have a policy with the rear yard ditch project. And, but this was a circumstance where it was budgeted as a heavier amount and the budget was done by Dan as a figure of how much this resident it might cost to fix the problem. We had a little bit of a discussion in our work session today and it's been referred to the municipals committee for discussion.
Thank you. Alman Kenny?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I have a communication along the same lines. Jim Murkowski, 1900 Block of G.G. Lane. Mr. Gomek has been to the property and he's sent him over some information on this afternoon.
Okay. Alman Clistic?
I have some communication from a residence with regards to some water standing between Fremantle apartments and Fremantle Terrace. I believe Dan was in communication. If you can just quickly clarify. I believe it was just extra leaves that were covering the gutter, but I haven't had a chance to go out there and look at it myself, so if you could just-
It's my understanding that our superintendent, Dan Silvato, has addressed the situation. It was basically something that, some minor work that needed to be done and Mr. Silvato had informed the residents of what could be done and how to do it and who to contact potentially.
Okay, thank you.
Was it not one of the city Darien issues? It was-
It was a combination of where there was drainage and it was really on private, really on private property and it was very minor in the grand scheme of things to take care of. It wouldn't even qualify for our rear, our rear yard drainage program.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other communications? Let's move on to the mayor's report. This evening, we do not have the Darien swarm. They're on our agenda this evening, but we do not have the Darien swarm pee-wee football squad here tonight. They were not able to fit into their schedule. They'll, we will be honoring them at our January 18th, 2016 meeting. The next item under the mayor's report is our recognition of our holiday home decorating contest winners. And I see the members of our committee, Ms. Hayes, Mr. Kaiser, and Mr. Legansky. Which one of you are, is going to do the presentation?
This year.
Okay. Come forward, please. That's right.
Okay, thanks, Mayor and City Council. It's that time of year again. Doesn't really feel like that time of year, but we'll take the nice weather. This year, we had 23 homes were nominated.
Oh, great.
So we got that down to eight. So there's three honorable mentions and there's five award winners, cash winners. You know, I remember like Jeanette used to always say, like every year, like there's always like different things kind of come out. This year, it seems like things are getting very high-tech. Lights change colors, you know, they're one minute they're one color, then they keep changing. So lasers, I mean, it's really getting high-tech out there. So you're gonna see that in a lot of the winters this year. So to start with the honorable mentions, the first honorable mention we have is that on the 2900 Block of Hillside, the home of Nick and Michelle Squares. I don't think they're here.
No.
I did not see them. If you, their house, they've been Darien residents for eight years and they start decorating around Thanksgiving. They have a tree in their front window. Their trees and shrubs are all decorated with colored lights. They have large colored bulbs on, along the right side of their home. And if you look up on that side, you see Santa going down the chimney with a nice white light shining. So you can't really miss it. They have a Santa on North Pole sign and a snowman greet you by the walkway. And then there's two lighted candles on their porch. So it's really kind of like a very nice warm welcome as you come up there, onto their porch. On the front lawn, there's a Santa in a sleigh with reindeer. There's an inflated candy cane arch behind it. There's large white snowflakes hanging above their garage door. And there's an inflated Santa and Christmas tree on the right side of the driveway. So it's, it's, it's done really nice. So thanks, Nick and Michelle. Okay, next is Liz.
Our next honorable mention is 701 Seventieth Street and that's the home of Kevin and Pat Zipsy and their daughter Claire. And Kevin is here. And the Zipsys have been at this address since 2000 and they've been decorating for years. Kevin and his daughter used to do all the decorating, but it's enlarged. And Pat is now involved. And you can't miss this display if you happen to drive down Seventieth Street. There's a huge Santa on the west end of the house and there's a giant pole equally large. It has strings of lights to create a tree in the center of the front lawn. There's archways of lights over the sidewalk and Kevin tells me the kids run up and down underneath the archways. There's a candy cane arch going into the front door. There's a Christmas tree and a pink pig to greet you. There's a gingerbread man that's warming himself in a hot cup of cocoa. And there's a lot to see in here. They have music playing as well. And if you happen to be walking your dog to see this display, there's a little jar by the driveway that welcomes your dog to have one of the little treats for your pooch. So Zipsys, thank you for sharing your holiday with all of us.
Do you want them to come up now to, so we can present that? Yes. Okay, Mr. Zipsy?
Really very nice of these citizens to share their ingenuity with us.
Liz, this is your first time getting involved in decorating?
No, we were here last year.
Were you here last year? Oh, see, bad memory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our next honorable mention goes to Chris and Krishna Sont. And Chris is here. I saw him when I came in. And the Sonts have been contributing in so many ways to our Darien community. And this is just another one. And they're original homeowners in their Hinsbrook home. Krishna told me they've been there since April of 1969. And she says Chris has been decorating the two-story home for about 25 years now. And this is a spectacular light show. This is another one that you can't miss when you go by. He's got, Chris has got, got lights on all the levels, three different levels of, starting with the top and going to the bottom. On the balcony, on the lower porch, lighting goes on out into the front yard. There's a blue wreath over the garage and the lighting continues into the backyard. There's lighted candles. There's a herd of reindeer. There's a tree with a star atop that stands guard over this front lawn from the upstairs balcony. The light show, when I came to give, to let them know to come to this, the light show continues inside the house. So thank you, Chris and Krishna, for your holiday contribution and also for your shared celebration with us all these years.
Could you repeat the address so residents can go by?
410 Seventy-first Street.
Are you going up on a ladder doing that stuff? You better not be.
Thank you.
Chris is also, I noticed, specially wired to accommodate these things. Moving into our, into our place winners, this was a first-time contestant this year. 7209 Richmond Avenue. This is the home of Amy Cowell and she is here and she's here with her mom and dad. Amy lives in this house. She's inspired to decorate by her dad. However, it was told to us, he's never won an award. But he did deposit a lot of his treasures in her third car garage. And so this is a beautifully decorated home. If you go by, Mickey Mouse, Goofy, Woodstock, Snoopy, they're all there. Santa's hosting a Wheel of Fortune that goes around. And the two contestants are named Naughty and Nice. There's an inflatable airstream style trailer with Santa occupant. There's penguins and a polar bear, a nativity set. And there's, here we saw the laser lights. The new thing on the garage serves as a glistening background against these, this full array of lights. There's giant glittering light bulbs. There's candy canes on the lawn. And the door, front door is flanked by a pair of smiling snowmen. Surrounding bushes are covered, decorated trees you can see from the outside in. And thank you, Amy, for this striking display. It really was, you know, it was quite a show. And I enjoyed it a lot. And this is Amy's work. This is all her when you look at it. That's 7209 Richmond.
Congratulations, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Okay, in fourth place, 7718 Sawyer is the home of Patrick Gillespie. I know Patrick's here tonight. Patrick's been a Darien resident for 33 years, but he admits that his daughter Sherri is the decorator of everything. He said he, she does it all. And she normally starts before Thanksgiving as well. He said that she insists that everything must be real. So it kind of starts off as a really beautiful, real Christmas tree in their front window. And then there's evergreen swag around, around all their eaves with white lights. That's really very tasteful. Even the front pole, their light post in front is, is all decorated with live swag with lights. There's two red candy canes there. There's also a big wreath on their garage. It's all lit up very nice as well. White lights are there. There's, all their shrubs are decorated either green or red and the larger trees are all in white. So it's very, very balanced. There's a snowman and a large redlit candy canes kind of all along the front of their home. So it's, it's really tasteful. It's just very well balanced. And so thank you, Patrick and Sherri Gillespie.
That's what, that's what he said. And you're collecting, right?
Yeah, Patrick said Sherri couldn't make it tonight, so he's here on her behalf. Thanks, Patrick. And Sherri. Okay, in third place, I don't see them either, but in third place this year is 1921 McAdam, which is the home of Renato and Myrna Montefusco. Again, Renato and, and his wife were founding residents of Darien. They've lived here for 39 years. They're both retired, so their son Renato does all the decorating. What's really nice about this home is that it sits on a corner. And so literally, all three sides of the house are decorated, the front and both sides. There's lighted figurines in the front window. The eaves are all decorated with colored lights and the shrubs. There's large colored bulbs in front. There's Santas. One side of their home has very nice white spiral Christmas trees. And also on the one side of their driveway, there is a, a tree made, all of lights hanging. It's, it's, it's really pretty. They also have this new type of effect that's like this laser light that shines red and green lights all over their house. So with everything lit up, you also have those lights kind of, really kind of accenting the house. So it's done very nicely. So thank you, Montefuscos, but I know, I don't think-
They're not here. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, in second place, I'm not gonna pull a Steve Harvey and name the wrong one. So in second place is 1905 Center Circle, which is the home of Dan and Ann McGinley. Dan admits that he is the architect for this great display. And he starts decorating before Halloween. And when you see this home, you'll know why. They've been residents for 22 years and Dan grew up here. Dan says that he likes action and this display is just that. There's colored lights on the eaves and roof lines all the way around with gold icicles hanging from the eaves as well. There's colored light bulbs outlining the walkways. And there's colored wreaths on the garage. And there's a series of inflatables on their home. And it's, it's really staggered kind of nice. So when you first come up, there's this nice inflatable that says Merry Christmas. And then right behind that, there's a Santa on a sleigh that's up, that's a little bit higher. And then behind that is this huge, big Santa with a Christmas tree. And that kind of takes you right up to the upstairs. And in the upstairs, in the right-hand bedroom, there's a Santa on display, which is, it's, it's done really well. You have to see it. They have a tree in their front window and they also have the lasers, that laser I was telling you about on the house. So even though the whole house is lit up, you still see these red and white, I mean, red and green specks on the home, which is really nice. Dan says he already has plans for next year, but he wouldn't tell me what that is. But he's, I guess we'll just have to wait and see. So I guess we'll have to stay tuned to see what Dan has in store for next year. So I know Dan is here and his wife and I think their son. So thanks, Dan and Ann, for this wonderful display.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Dan is the son of Lou McGinley, who was our city treasurer for many years.
All right, drumroll. Number one, the top winner for the night is Mark and Lori Rezek. And they are here. And they're there. And this is at 1118 Seventy-ninth Street. And Lori is a designer and decorator of this really outstanding, it's just a warm and inviting holiday display. Lori makes some of her decorations. She's got ice gates that look weathered and they're hanging by the front door. And I'm not encouraging you to necessarily walk up to the Rezek's front door, but if you do get an invite, take your time because she's got a lot there.
They're all invited.
She's got window boxes on the front of the house and they're not only lighted, but during the day, you know, you can see there's greens there. There's decorations in it. She's got a bench sitting to the left of the front, front door. That's, it's, it's, it's a bench with, she's got a candlelit lantern and a pillow that sits there that says, "We wish you a Merry Christmas." There's a full-size tree in the living room window, in the living room window, and it's adorned with radko ornaments, which are collector's items. There's a sign to the front of the door that Lori made herself that says, "It's a wonderful time of year." There's lights on the chimney. There's lights on the eaves and the tree trunks. And all the while, you can hear softly playing holiday music. So thank you, Lori and Mark, for sharing your talents, your ingenuity, and your holiday spirit with us. They have been winners here at this contest several times over the years. I know that. And you've consistently provided us with such a grand display over the years that we would like to award you also with a lifetime achievement award for, for sharing your gift with us for the whole community. So.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Congratulations.
And Jim has the pictures of all the, you know, the houses and things.
And the photos will be up on display in the lobby. And the, the holiday trolley will be going tomorrow, tomorrow night to go visit all of these homes.
What are the times for the trolley?
It's 6:30 and 8, isn't it? Yeah.
There's three, I think.
Yeah, 6:30 and 8. Thank you, thank you, members of the committee. I know, I, if there's ever a committee that can be fun, this has got to be one of them. And it's, I really appreciate your efforts of, and Jim, you're the photographer. Is that correct?
I give them the work of rocking and I take pictures.
And drive. Well, you stop to take the pictures before you drive, right?
We do stop because we have to, now, you know, take notes on the houses and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because as noted, there was over 20 homes. And we had to decide out of the 20, which eight are gonna be the winner.
Well, that's great. Is that the largest, Jim just mentioned there was 20 homes that were nominated. Is this the largest number so far that you, that you've been dealing with as a committee?
For us, yeah. Now, maybe years past.
Yeah, I don't recall from previous years. So, but that's great. That's, I'm so glad that so many people are nominating homes. That's great. That's great. Thank you very much for your efforts. Really appreciate it. Yes. Thank you. Okay, do you want to, we can bring, do you want to bring it up now? And-
As mentioned, there's a picture of our house, our winner, and it has the sign in there. It's smaller than the seat, but it has a very nice, you know, you don't want to go there and visit if you don't want to leave.
Okay, which, which, oh, first place. Okay, all right, yeah.
So the residents should be careful to see this guy, you know, out in your yard.
Okay. Those are great pictures, too. You're a good photographer, Jim. Thank you very much. Well, I'm sure that-
It's everybody who participated and decorated.
Yes.
Make it look like Christmas, at least.
And there, and we had 20 homes nominated. You can leave that open, Jim, on, yeah. We had over 20 homes nominated, but there are so many residents that take the time to decorate their homes. And that's what makes it special. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you all for participating in our contest this year. We really appreciate that. Sure, sure. Yeah. Okay, all the winners come on up.
All winners present.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Up here or?
Where would you like, because I can get out of-
It's more festive up here.
Yeah, I think it's more festive up here, don't you think? We can get out of the way and- Yeah, have everybody stand here and the photos in front of them. What do you think?
Yeah, that's good.
Chris, how are you? Hi, how are you?
I know, right?
Twelve guys, twelve guys in the back. They don't bend. They're gonna block me out.
Okay, all right.
Can anybody look this way? One, two, three. Okay, one more. Everybody smile. One, two, three.
Perfect, thank you. Don't hold up.
Okay, smile again.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Yes. Merry Christmas. I know, yeah. He does look like his father, too.
I have an idea for next year.
Yes?
We should have a, an award for like the block with the most spirit or something.
Whoa.
So you get more people. What do you think?
What do you think? Not a bad, yeah. Well, we have to start advertising that early, right?
Sounds like you just did.
That does have an impact when you go onto a block and you see-
The whole block or many houses? Yeah.
There are quite a few in ours.
Yeah. Yeah, now this, these, these photo display will be in our hall, in our lobby for any resident to come by City Hall to see. And as I said, the trolley that goes to visit all these homes will be going, there's two trips, 6:30 and 8 o'clock tomorrow night.
I believe they also include the addresses in our direct connect when it'll come out on Friday. So if people want to see the specific addresses-
And go on their own.
They can reference-
Yes, go on their own. Yes.
On Friday? On Christmas Day?
Well, uh-
Hopefully, they won't take them down.
Yeah, we send it out on Wednesday. We'll send it out earlier this week, yeah.
That's right, because your office is closed on Friday, yes. Okay. All righty. Let's, let's move to the Darien Chamber of Commerce report update.
Good evening. The Darien Chamber of Commerce is excited to announce the finalists for the 2015 Darien Chamber Excellence Awards. The Gift of Carl Foundation, MFC Sports Performance, Our Lady of Peace School, Chuck Southern Comfort Cafe, and Home Helpers Home Care. Join us on January 26th at Chuck's for the Excellence Award Luncheon and the 2016 State of the Chamber. You can register online at darienchamber.com. Attention, Darien businesses. The Darien Chamber is hosting our second annual Spring Into the Darien Chamber Membership Drive, beginning January 1st through March 1st. All new businesses that join the Chamber will receive free Darien-swag bag sponsorship opportunities. All existing members are invited to refer a Darien business to join the Chamber and also receive free swag bag sponsorship opportunities. Now is the time to join the Chamber and be part of the largest business organization in the city of Darien. Join us for the multi-chamber State of the County Address with Dan Cronin on January 13th at Seven Bridges Golf Club. Register online at darienchamber.com. The Darien Rotary Club is hosting an open house on January 20th at Q Bar and Grill. All are welcome to attend. The next DCC Coffee Connection will be held on January 26th, 8:00 a.m. at First American Bank. Congratulations to Chamber member, MFC Sports Performance, who has been selected as an honoree of the Business Ledger Suburban Young Professional Recognition Program. The mission of the program is to recognize executives under the age of 35 who are making a difference in the business community. A reception will be held on Thursday, January 14th at Weber Grill in Lombard to recognize all of the honorees for the business success which they have received early in their career. I was one of the ones who nominated Adam and I'm so excited for him. I hope he wins this award. The Darien Chamber of Commerce presents our 16th Annual Darien Dash, which will be held on May 15th. The One Mile Race is back. Extra early bird discounts will apply again. We have new cash awards this year. We have changed our structure. In the past, we gave out $2,500 to the schools who had the most participants. This year, we're upping and changing the structure. We're gonna be giving out $4,000. $2,000 to the school, one school who has the most race participants, and $2,000 to any Darien 501(c)(3) organization. So we're gonna try to get more of the organizations involved. I know there's two other organizations that I've spoke to already. Our Lady of Peace, who runs the race, and the Project Home Challenge Foundation. And I'm trying to get them to partner with us. So we're excited about the new cash rewards. New this year, we're gonna have blue 100% polyester dry-fit shirts. So we're excited about the new performance shirts to the first 300 registered. And like I said, the early bird special will go through April 1st. Registration will be open January 1st this year, so we're ahead of schedule. And Cara members will receive $2 discount again. And that's all I have. So on behalf of the Darien Chamber Board of Directors and myself, happy holidays and we'll see everybody in 2016.
Thanks, Claire. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Claire?
Claire, just really quickly, where do we register for the race? For the, the May 15-
Darien Dash?
Darien Dash.
Is that online?
Okay.
On the Chamber, online?
Okay, that's all you have to confirm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's move to the city clerk's report. I have a couple of items, Madam Mayor. City offices will be closed on Thursday, December the 24th, Friday, December 25th, and Friday, January 1st, in observance of Christmas and New Years. The next city council meeting that was scheduled for January 4th- The next city council meeting that was scheduled for January fourth has been canceled, and we will be meeting on Monday, January eighteenth, at the normal time. Thank you. Let's move to City Administrator's Report.
I have no report, Mayor, thank you.
Let's move to Department Head Reports. I believe Chief Thomas has a report for us.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Same to you.
Real quick, overnight parking ban has been suspended for the holidays. The city of Darien is going to suspend the overnight parking ban for the upcoming holiday from Wednesday, December twenty-third, through Monday, January fourth. And then we will start enforcing the ban again on Tuesday, January fifth. Just some highlights from the eleventh period statistical report. A few things that I think might snap out to people that read the report or look at the report. And some of them, I think, need a little caution when you look at statistics. The first item, and it's on page two of the report, and it's the first item assault. And when you look at it and you see the number of sixty percent, sounds like a huge increase in the number of assaults, but we also have to look at the numeric change. And the numeric change of the change of three. And also, when looking at assaults, you also have to take it in the vein of correct UCR reporting. And the way this statistical report doesn't follow UCR reporting, so in reality, it should include battery that is the second from the bottom. And you'll see in the battery section, batteries are down nearly thirty percent. So it's, when you look at those two together, the assault and battery portion of the uniform crime reports is looking very good. It's actually twelve fewer victims than normal. Some people think, well, what's the difference between the two? An assault is defined by statute as reasonable apprehension of receiving battery. The battery itself is the actual physical contact, so it's obviously good to have less physical contacts. Item number three, residential burglary. Residential burglaries are down forty-eight percent, numeric change of eleven. That's significant. Most people want to feel safe in their persons and effects, especially when they're away from their house. And so that's a nice thing to see, that reduction. Not sure all of facts pushing that reduction, but I did see that under page three, item nine, under key statistics, as well as page three, item twelve, the home house checks are up significantly, about five hundred and eighty percent, that's huge. And well as suspicious activity being called in by citizens, and then the response by the police is up nearly seventy-five percent. So I think a couple of those items, along with catching key players, did a lot to reduce the number of residential burglaries. Another item is criminal damage, item number four, dropped sixty percent. It sounds like a terrific number, and it probably is. We also have to look at what was the driving factor in the prior year, and I don't know what that driving factor was. Could be that you had a whole series of criminal damage that was done by a BB gun or a paint pellet or something to that effect. And then the following year, you don't have that spree, so it's going to drop significantly. Criminal damage is not a part of the, you know, uniform crime reports. It's what they call is a part two crime. It's, a lot of time is looked at order maintenance type of issues. Item eleven, burglary of the motor vehicle, that is a item that is included in the uniform crime reports. It doesn't look good with burglaries of motor vehicles up fifty-three percent. And the numeric change is twenty-three, which is, again, is significant. I would point to the current eleventh period on page two. That shows that there were zero in the current reporting period, which is a good thing. Additionally, there was a two-week stretch that caused that significant spike in burglary motor vehicles. That person has since been arrested, and the activity has dropped off quite significantly. We talk a lot in policing about the prolific offender. Intelligence-led policing really talks that topic very well. The statistics says that about six percent of offenders are responsible for about sixty percent of your crime. So taking off a prolific offender like this individual was huge to reduce your crime rate. So that's a nice thing to see, the officers out there working hard and making that happen. Couple other key statistics on page three, domestic calls. They're up pretty significantly, up fifty percent. It's a hundred and eighteen more calls this year than the prior year. But you'll also see that on page four, item three, domestic battery, the rest are up about forty-seven percent as well. And again, it just tells you the things that police need to be involved in. Simply just can't make an arrest and figure that crime's going to go away or things are going to be all better. There's a lot of different things with prevention, intervention, and those type of things that need to be involved as well. On page four, arrests, it looks like there might be something out of control with alcohol by our youth. But again, you need to look at that number instead of looking at possession of alcohol being up by two hundred percent, it's numeric change of two. So it doesn't mean that there's this, kids are running wild and having a lot of alcohol with them. It's just a numeric change that, or the percentage change just makes it look bad. The numeric change is well within any kind of thing that you would want to look at. Last thing I would talk about is the school engagement issues. First off, this, the state of Illinois requires six drills to be done each year, three evacuation drills, one severe weather drill, one bus evacuation drill, and one law enforcement drill. That act also requires that that law enforcement drill be done in conjunction with, and you work with the police department to make that happen. Sergeant Pickley has, is in charge of that, and he advises that all nine schools have met their requirement in the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen school year. And all of them are, all but one are completed this year, and it will, the last one will be completed later, later this school year, first part of next year, calendar year. Active shooters, kind of, we talked about this a little bit last meeting where I presented about the Walmart. Active shooter is defined as an individual actively engaged in killing or attempting to kill people in a confined or populated area. It's very important for law enforcement to work closely, closely with schools to train and educate them. Since nineteen ninety-nine, after Columbine, to, through twenty thirteen, there's been thirty-nine school-related shootings, so it is important for us to do these things. Sometimes difficult to talk about them, but it is a reality that we're faced with, and something that we need to deal with. We know that the sooner we get into the school, the sooner we neutralize the person or confront them, the shooting usually stops. And then we can also get aid to the victims quicker and have less casualties. In adulation to those school contacts, we have other school engagement issues going on. A lot of, you'll see that on, let's see, page number, page number seven. There's been a hundred and seven school visits with ten presentations being done this year. That's a good thing to see. We've had some accolades from school districts about being pleased that officers are in attendance, that they're making their way to lunch hour, having some interaction with the kids, which is always very nice to see. Presentations are run the gamut from cyberbullying, bullying, and internet safety, three things that the school wishes us to help them out with. And classes or presentations that Nick Squares, Sergeant Squares, put together in order to, to get that done. The school themselves are really taking the lead on doing the drug interdiction and prevention type things, and they're doing that through their health classes. So that's an update for the eleventh period, so if you have any questions, I'll entertain anything.
Alderman Shower?
Yeah, Chief, on juvenile arrests on page three, I'm assuming year-to-date twenty fifteen should be seventy-one, and not seven thousand one hundred and seventy-one?
Correct.
Okay.
I had, I had-
Lot of arrests.
I had brought that up as well, and I thought it was corrected, so I'm going to look at mine to see if it-
Page three.
If it was. Uh, no. I had also in our adult arrests, it was five hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. I asked for both of those to be corrected. It looked like it was typed in there twice.
Alderman Belkey?
Also on page three, the house checks. Can you comment about what you've been seeing as a change with that big increase?
Yeah, in fact, I went to roll call today, and they have on their, in the roll call room, a book that has all the vacation checks that people are going on vacation in long periods of time. And it's amazing how many times you'll see that, you know, you go through that book, and how many times the officers have been to those locations checking to make sure that the houses are secure and things are going well for the person that's left their house going on vacation.
And Chief Thomas, that's the resident that's calling in to let our police department know that they're going to be on vacation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Alderman Kenny?
Chief, do you look at other community, do you take this, you know, eleventh quarter report and look at other municipalities around and see what their numbers are compared to ours? To see if there's any patterns that are like along with ours, like, I mean, the one number I'm looking at, and it's kind of do it other, you know, communities per se, but this time of the year, you looked at domestic violence. So the eleventh period in thirteen was at four, last year was at twelve, this year it's at eighteen. Do we, do we look at, do we look at, you know, patterns in the different periods and see what, you know, what causes those kind of patterns? And do we look at those same patterns, you know, along other communities surrounding Darien to see where they correlate?
Patterns during periods, yes. And a lot of times, you'll see a lot of different things. Unfortunately, during the holidays, people get together. When people get together, usually domestic violence goes, goes up. Same thing around Wednesday of Thanksgiving, day before Thanksgiving, all the kids are home from college, and the rookie drinkers are out, and stupid things happen. So there's a lot of different patterns that you'll see with, with time, season, all those different types of things. Holiday season, usually retail thefts will go up and the like. Comparing to other agencies, I have not personally done that to date. I have to look at other, excuse me, how other agencies do it, because right now, this does not follow a typical I U C R pattern. So it might be difficult to do some of those things, but I'll have to look at what other agencies do. Thank you.
Chief, could you reiterate again? You covered the number, but suspicious activity calls were up seventy-three percent. And, you know, we've been trying to really get that message out over the last, really hard over the last couple of years. Call nine-one-one, please, you know, you know your neighborhood, you know if things look suspicious, and, you know, I read the daily reports, and I see that. Maybe you could just reiterate how critical that is to the, to the community.
Yeah, I did breeze over it a little bit. The, it's up significantly, and I talked to Deputy Chief Cooper about, about that topic. And he really reiterated that there's been a big push by the police, by the community, or pushed by the police and elected people to push the, and urge the community to call in suspicious people. Oftentimes, the community are the best ones to know what is suspicious. They know what car doesn't belong, they know what people don't belong, or those type of things going on in the neighborhood. And they're the best ones to call that in. And so it's always better to call in that suspicious activity, let the officer go and verify that it is a normal, everyday occurrence, somebody's moving in, somebody's moving out. Those type of things versus letting something bad happen, and then do a neighborhood canvass after a burglary, and somebody say, well, yeah, I saw a moving truck over there the other day, and blah, blah, blah. So it's always best to call those suspicious things in. And whether or not it's the suspicious activity, building checks, or a combination of a lot of different things, the numbers are going down, which is a great thing.
And to follow up to that, the number is the nine-one-one emergency number when you see those suspicious activities. We still get hesitation, a lot of communities do, from residents feeling they're bothering, or wait, should I really not call nine-one-one for this? And we reiterate all the time, nine-one-one is the number to call when you want police service or you're calling in that activity.
Any other questions for Chief?
Thank you, everyone.
Let's move to the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number fifteen sixteen sixteen, in the amount of five hundred forty-one thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-four cents from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended December tenth, in the amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents, for a total to be approved of eight hundred four thousand nine hundred seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny? Discussion? Turn the roll, please. Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent. The warrant has been approved. Do you want to go over the monthly report?
The monthly revenue and expenditure report, which reflects activity through the first seven months of the fiscal year ended November thirtieth. General fund, year-to-date revenue of eight million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, expenditures of six million five hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars, for a current balance of two million nine hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. Water fund, year-to-date revenue of three million three hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, expenditures of three million three hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars, for a current balance of twenty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue one hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars, expenditures of three hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars, for a current balance of seventy-seven thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue three hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars, expenditures ninety-two thousand forty-five dollars, for a current balance of one hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred forty dollars. Capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue of two million two hundred thirty-eight thousand forty-seven dollars, expenditures of three million two hundred seven thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars, for a current balance of four million seven hundred seventeen thousand six hundred nine dollars. And the capital projects debt service fund, year-to-date revenue of five hundred thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars, with a like amount in the current fund balance.
Just a question, do we, do we have a rate increase in the water fund starting?
Not this year. This year, there was no increase in the water rate.
Okay, so the low number there for the current cash balances, is that just a reflection of the, that's a reflection?
Yeah, we just had a check, because we only receive those checks every other month. We just had a check, a little over a million dollars, that probably, I think, came in maybe within the last week.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. It was just, it's just the month that, yeah, the timing, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the treasurer?
Mayor Weaver, Alderman Shower had asked a question. We'll look into that, that the municipal utility tax seems to be lagging a little bit over the year-to-date budget. So we'll have to check that. That, that is, there's a pattern to that also, you know, if you have a, if you have a really hot summer, people are using air conditioners more. If you have a very cold winter, maybe the gas, so that would catch up. But again, maybe with the mild weather, we might be running a tad behind, but we will check into that more.
I have asked Marie about that also.
Okay.
And the other factor, don't get, the comment, the aggregation, we are saving a little bit of money on aggregation, and we do charge a certain fixed percentage.
Yes.
So with the bills being down as a result of that, but the amount is down fairly dramatically.
Let's move to standing committee reports. Do the chairman have reports? Alderman Belzak?
Yes, the Municipal Services Committee has its next meeting on January fourth of next year, at six thirty PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next meeting of the Darien Police Committee will be on Monday, January eighteenth, at six PM in the police department training room.
Thank you. And Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our January fourth admin finance meeting has been canceled due to lack of agenda items.
So nothing scheduled at this point?
No.
Okay. All right, let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. I don't think any of the Aldermen have any more questions. Does anyone have any questions for the questions on the agenda? We don't have an audi, we have one person in the audience. Hi, did you, are you a reporter, or are you?
No, I am architect for the project.
Ah ha, okay. So you're on the agenda, so, thank you. So if there's no questions and comments from any audience, let's move on to old business, and there being no old business. I'll move to the consent agenda. We have only two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license bond requirements for the Darien Lions Club. And the next item is the approval of an ordinance approving a variation from the Darien zoning ordinance for a final plot of subdivision and site plan for the Republic Bank slash Kitty Academy at fifteen oh two, slat two, fifteen ten, Seventy-Fifth Street. Do I have a motion to approve the two items? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak? The roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Six ayes. Both items have been approved, the next item under new business is a motion to approve an ordinance levying taxes for general and special corporate purposes for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May two thousand fifteen, and ending on the thirtieth day of, of April two thousand sixteen, for the City of Darien. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak? Discussion? Then the roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion has been approved, item B under new business is a motion to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning the first day of May two thousand fifteen, and ending on the thirtieth day of April two thousand sixteen, in and for the City of Darien Special Service Area Number One, which is known as Tara Hill. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belkey, seconded by Alderman Kenny? Discussion? Then the roll, please. Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion has been approved, let's move to questions, comments, and announcements, of a general nature from the, the Council, anyone besides wishing everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas?
And a happy birthday.
And, is, when's your birthday?
Wednesday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Christmas baby, oh boy.
Best present ever.
I'll ask your mom about that one.
If you're watching, you agree, right?
Any other, any, okay, from the audience, there is no audience, then I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn, Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Belkey, all in favor?
Aye.
And Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.